Good evening, everyone. Township Attorney's Office meeting, June 10th, 6:30 PM. Statement. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant of public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertising Esberry Park Press and Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of meeting. The rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, Estate Card Program, Ralph Black, July 1, New York.
This is going to be postponed, probably in a month. They still were taking care of a few items to work out the new proposal contract.
Very good. Item number two, Lacy Historical Society, Open House, Donna Moller.
Hello. We are obviously representing the Historical Society and the Schoolhouse Museum. And on, all throughout COVID, we've been very busy working on new displays, cleaning up, reorganizing the Schoolhouse Museum. On Saturday, June 26th, we will be having a grand reopening of the museum from 10:00 to 1:00. But we'd like to extend a special invitation to our Township Committee at 11:00 on Saturday the 26th for a guided tour. There'll be historic address and different, so you can see the different changes that we've made to our museum. In conjunction with the 150th celebration, we'll also be keeping our museum open every Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00. But then if there are other people who would like to perhaps bring a Girl Scout troop, a Boy Scout troop, something like that, they need to call the museum and we can arrange a tour time with them. And also in keeping with the 150th, we'll be doing fireside chats every Friday night beginning July 9th through August 13th. The first one will be July 9th and it will be on the Birth of Lacy Township. We always are looking for new members to come and join us. You don't have to know everything about Lacy Township. It's a learning process. And we'd also like to extend a thank you to our DPW for working on our building and our grounds and getting it all ready as they do every year for us.
Can I approach, I have a question.
We have invitations for everybody.
This is community.
I gave him backwards.
Deputy Mayor.
Sorry. Yes, it's down. Stevens.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Thank you so much.
To the Historical Society, I have one question.
The Historical Society.
Is, are you going to have the town historian give a lecture?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Of course.
When is, I gotta see this. When is he doing this?
Off the top of my head, I think it's July 30th. We're going to have, we're going to have different programs. One of them is going to be the Birth of Lacy. We're also going to have the development of the Police Department, which unfortunately we really, you know, we just lost.
Right.
But we have other people that are going to speak also, the Fire Department, different industries that were in Lacy, including hotels and whatnot, and that's part of our new displays also. And we're going to have a special kids' night where we have a storyteller that comes in and she's going to do specific stories for children. This is what she does, so it should be really very nice.
That's great.
So the township historian at times tends to stray from reality. Can we have our administrator there to verify was the facts that he might, he's old, you know, he just doesn't remember the way.
That's why he's the historian.
Yeah, I know.
That's why they told me I have to also invite his son to kind of.
There you go.
And, and, and his son doesn't have to say anything, you can just look at his face. It's something like this.
Well, that day we'll have an end time, but we'll start at 7:00, 8:30. Hope you make it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Item number three, Lacy 150th Announcements.
You're back again. I'm back again, didn't have time to change. Different hat. 150th. We are looking for volunteers. We're looking for more volunteers. You don't have to volunteer for every activity. It can be one item. It can be a phone caller. It can be showing up for an event. But we need volunteers. We're going to be having a open house volunteer meeting on June 22nd at 7:00 in the Rec Building. You can call and get more information, just show up. Life refreshments will be served. Coming up, the Health and Music Fair will be held on Saturday, June 19th. There'll be live music, food, and fitness demonstrations. Right now, we have 17 to 20 different organizations that will be joining us, but we would love to have more. If you are a gym, if you are a karate studio, a dance studio, we'd love to have people come and participate, and then also the townspeople to come out and enjoy the day. Cookbook, Last Chance to Put a Recipe In will be June 30th. That is our deadline. Garden Walk, we need gardens. We have very few gardens. Master gardeners, amateur gardeners, we need people to show off their green thumb. The Garden Walk will be June 25th, 26th, and 27th. If you have a day limitation where you can only do it one day, if you'd only like to show your garden for one day, that's fine. Just let us know. We'll sign you up. If you've looked through our Facebook page, you will see every Friday there is a Who's Been Flagged post where we're highlighting town businesses and homes in our town who have purchased flags. Join businesses such as The Waterfront, The Captain's Inn, Beald's Jeweler, Ferguson, The Forked River Freezer. Lots of businesses have been hanging their flags proudly, as well as homeowners. Reach out to the Recreation Department to purchase your flags. Jersey Charm Coffee has created a new blend called Blend 150 in honor of Lacy Township. It will be on sale next week at the Farmer's Market and in their shop, regular and decaf. So we're looking forward to that. The Waterfront has created a, an adult beverage called the Lacy Transfusion.
We're going to need a lot of that.
There will be a beverage name coming from The Captain's Inn as well. And we're saving the best for last. Our big news is that there will be a 150th parade. It will be, God bless you, it will be held on Thursday, August 5th. Very excited. We would love to have families involved. We would love to have businesses involved, sports teams, the schools, everybody involved. There'll be a special fun surprise at the end of the parade at Gilly Park. And some really fun things for the kids to get involved. Perhaps even a bike parade. Who knows? We're trying. So thank you for your support and we need everybody to come out and take part in all these 150th activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, Use of Vican Business Park Lot, American Historical Society for Bayside Park Living Shoreline Project.
All right, the Bayside Beach Club had applied a couple years ago for the grant through the Safeguard Bay and the State of New Jersey. They had received the grants to put in and live in shoreline to protect the Bayside Beach property, which will also encourage upon some of the Baymont Park property as well. Well, they need a staging area to stage some of their rock, their McShells, their Hesco baskets and those things like that. There is nothing convenient in the area of the size that they need. So they had approached myself and Mr. Parker as to if we had a location that was convenient. And we did come up with a triangular piece of the business park that they could stage their stuff with permission of, of the governing body, and they would provide us with a whole harmless and a certificate of insurance to leave the equipment there. They understand that it's at their own risk, they have to protect it, they're going to have to, you know, keep, so nobody will go and obviously take it and steal it. But I just need your approval to whether or not you're going to support the use of that property.
Move a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
They will also be piggybacking off of our maintenance dredging permit as well, so there's a portion of the area that they have to dredge some stuff out, and our maintenance dredging permit is still good until 2022 for that area. So I authorize that.
Good. Item number five, Petition to County Natural Land Trust for Purchase of Block 226, Lots 15.02 and 15.03.
That's me. I asked Veronica to put this on the agenda. So, in the, in the words of our Township historian, we're talking about John Parker, to understand where you are, you have to understand the history. So when I began my terms on the Township Committee, and Veronica will fill in the blanks and correct me if I'm wrong, just like she will be Township historian, we were going for what's called Township Center Designation. And what that basically meant was CAPRA had expired, and that meant that when CAPRA expired, developers in Lacy Township were only able to develop their properties with 30% impervious coverage. And that was a hardship for the Route 9, which is basically, that's what we would consider our town center. Our town center, we consider Route 9 and Lacy Road. So that's why it was difficult for commercial developers, and that's what we were focusing on, to be able to develop along Lacy Road. So we fought for many years to get what's called Township Center Designation. And we had applied years ago when I was mayor, my first time, I guess in 2005, and we were knocked down, we were denied by the DEP. And over the years, it was kind of a crapshoot, you couldn't apply anymore, but to his credit, when, when Mr. Kennas came on the Township Committee, he picked up the torch and ran with it. And all these years later, and I'm not sure if it was a year ago or two years ago that we were able to finally get Township Center Designation. The problem is that the commercial window passed us by, and commercial properties really are not, you know, popular right now. Developers don't want to develop commercial property, commercial projects and property because they can't rent them, especially these past year with COVID. So, but what has really boomed are residential properties. So we're faced with a number of applicants who would like to develop multifamily homes. And we've got two in the pipeline right now, and they're causing a lot of controversy to Township for a couple reasons. Well, no, for many reasons, traffic. I mean, Route 9 is way different than it was 15 years ago. So one in particular that really has, has seemed like a sore spot is the development that was recently received preliminary approval across from the Applebee's on Route 9 for 68 townhomes. And, and, you know, don't, don't, you know, a lot of people throw out affordable housing. Well, they aren't affordable housing, but there is an affordable housing component as required by the State of New Jersey. So there are two problems here. Of course, the traffic. The old problem, and you can say, listen, it's environmentally sensitive, every, every piece of property in Lacy Township is contiguous, contiguous or connected to environmentally sensitive property. Over there, a little bit more because there's a lot of wetlands. So again, that project has received preliminary approval based on their approval from the DOT and the DEP. And what must happen if they receive approval, and it's, it's a very long process, they need to come back before the Township, the Planning Board to determine whether or not the approvals really change the project to, to the degree that the Planning Board has to issue new guidelines. Well, there's another way around it. Now, people say, well, why can't we buy all, just, why can't the Township just buy the property? Well, we're not in the business of buying property. You know, it, it's, it's basically the burden will fall on, on the residents for two reasons. Number one, we have to buy the property, and we just don't have the money because we are subject to the 2% cap, and that's another story for another day. But by buying the property, what we do is we take the property off the tax rolls. Now, I believe one day, you know, the, the economy goes up and down, and one day, commercial will make, you know, a resurgence. When? I don't know. But in the meantime, we've got two, at least two projects right now that have been, have received approval for multifamily homes. That project and the project where the old Minister of Golf Course is next to Niko Japanese Restaurant. That one really bothers me because I really like Niko Japanese Restaurant, but, but I digress. So what, what this is, it's a petition, I'd like to make a motion for the Township Committee to ask the county to use the Natural Lands Trust to purchase this property for preservation. I, I think it's a good piece to do this. I, I think because of the problems on Route 9 on that side of the town, no matter what happens, it's not going to get widened. The, the, the DEP or DOT are not going to require drastic changes to Route 9 such as they did in front of the Home Depot, which really helped when they built that. So I would like support from this committee to petition the county to purchase this property for preservation. I know it's, it, it takes it off the tax rolls, but I think on that side of town, it would be a benefit to the Township and, you know, that's where we're at. So I'd like some more.
I'm going to second the, the motion. Besides what Mr. Dykoff had to say, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Quinn about it, and he thought it was a good idea, but look at it this way. Right where that is, if there's 68 townhomes, figure two cars per townhome, it's an additional 136 cars. Now, making a left, if they're coming down nine to make a left to get into that place right there, that Lacy and Route 9 intersection, just forget about it, you know, you're gonna, it's going to be ridiculous. So I'll second the motion.
Yeah, I support that motion. I too spoke to Commissioner Quinn, and, you know, they've been talking for how many decades to widen Route 9. So they're adding more people, they're adding more infrastructure, but they're not giving us the roadway. That was one of the idea behind, or at least some of the idea behind the rail trail, to have an alternate route so that we just won't bury the tailpipe, type, tailpipe fumes and we had an alternate route in case there was, God forbid, an evacuation event that was needed. So, yeah, I support that.
I will be voting no on the, on the recommendation. Lacy Township is something like 80 square miles. We have plenty of land that's preserved in Lacy Township. We may have, I don't even know what the total is, maybe six square miles of developable land. To, to set aside that piece of property, that's, you know, a commercial piece of property on Route 9, I, I don't, I just don't agree. That's our last, that's our only ratable property left in the Township, and that's the only property that will be getting developed going forward. Route 9 and Lacy Road will be the only property that's developed over the next 30 years in Lacy outside of the power plant. So I just don't agree with removing commercial property off the tax rule.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to do a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
No.
Mr. Kennas?
No.
And Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes.
It does pass, I will speak with the county as to what we need to do. I do believe we will have a resolution that we'll need to vote on in the July meeting in order for them to start the process. I do have an add-on to this agenda this evening, and it's for a resolution for tonight's Township agenda. As you know, we've been in the past couple of years going out for community aggregation for our electric energy. The last contract expired June of 2019. We did go out to bid in July of 2020. Unfortunately, the bids were very unsuccessful. JCPN L was a still favorable market in comparison to the bids that were accepted in 2020. We went out to bid, pre-bid in May of this year. We qualified four suppliers, three suppliers did submit pricing early this morning today. It's a very acceptable pricing. We went out for a 14-month term, 19-month term, and a 24-month term with a start contract of October of 2021. The low price received was from Energy Harbor LLC for a 20-month term of .08490 kilowatts per hour. The contract price is lower than both rounds, round one and round two, that we had gone into for the energy aggregation program. The average initial savings is going to be about 11% off of the current JCPN L tariff prices. And with, and next June, there is an expected tariff price drop for JCPN L, so the projected savings will decrease somewhat, but the overall projected savings for the 24-month contract will be about 7% over the life of the contract as compared to the current basic generation for JCPN L. So it's about $130 over contract term for the typical residential house. So I would like to add the resolution on tonight for consideration and award. Mailing's would go out to the residents in late July, early August with the program details. Residents would have to opt out, if within a 30-day opt-out period, or else you're automatically opted in. Service for the folks who don't opt out will begin October of 2021, and residents will still receive their bill from JCPN L, but there would be a little section on there like they have been in the past as to the Energy Harbor line item for power supply will replace the JCPN L power supply. And those individuals that are on a budget plan with JCPN L will also be set up for a budget plan with Energy Harbor. Any questions?
I'll make the motion.
All right, so we'll add the resolution on for tonight?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything to add on to this agenda? Motion to adjourn this agenda?
Move it.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Township Lacy Township Meeting, June 10th, 2021. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant of public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertising Esberry Park Press, the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Salute to the flag of Mollman Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, First Reading Wardens, 2021-15, authorizing the sale of Block 1197, lots 30 and 31, to the adjoining property owner.
Warden's of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, offer resident sale of Block 1197, Lot 30 and 31, on the municipal tax maps, Sir Ryan Valari and L.L. Dickinson, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48 Home 12-13P and NJSA 48 Home 12-13.2. This is a 40 by 100 parcel located behind the individual's house. It is being sold for the fair market value of $5,940 plus any fees, and it must be joined to their current piece of property.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number two, Resolution 2021-151, appointing a Deputy Court Administrator.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Christina DeMay as Deputy Municipal Court Administrator for the Township of Lacy. The Township had our Court Administrator retired at the end of last year. We promoted from within our prior deputy, and it just went out and performed interviews and interviewed quite a few people with the judge and the office of administrative office of the court, and we are again promoting from within, and Christina DeMay will be our new Deputy Municipal Court Administrator, and we would be an annual salary of $50,000.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number three, Resolution 2021-152, appointing Michael Tabella as Emergency Management Coordinator.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Michael Tabella as Emergency Management Coordinator for the Township of Lacy. His term as Emergency Management Coordinator expires June 30th of 2021. This is a new term as of July 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2024. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number four, Resolution 2021-153, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Recreation Department.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Recreation Department. This is a replacement staff, we have somebody resigned, and we are appointing a replacement for the beach patrol.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution 2021-154, authorizing a medical leave of absence.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a medical leave of absence for Kusmira Kenka under the Family Medical Leave Act.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2021-155, authorizing the Administrator Clerk to execute an affidavit in favor of surety title agency.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the Lacy Township Administrator Clerk to execute an affidavit in favor of surety title agency coastal region as an agent for the First American Title Insurance Company. This is in regards to the Community Hall property, and for us to secure title insurance, there's an affidavit that I must sign off and effect, effectuate with regards to the any deed restrictions on the property.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2021-157, authorizing the execution of a contract with the Teamsters Local Number 97.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of contract with the Teamsters Local 97 for the effective years of January 1st of 2019 through December 31st of 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2021-157, authorizing the execution of a contract with PBA Local 238 for 2019 and 2020.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of contract with PBA Local 238 for 2019 and 2020.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2021-158, authorizing the execution of a contract with the PBA Local 238 for 2021 through 2025.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of contract with PBA Local 238 for the years 2021 through 2025.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number 10, Resolution 2021-159, Renewing Plenary Retail Consumption Licenses.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, renewing plenary retail consumption licenses in the Township of Lacy. Those would be your restaurants, your Captain's Inn, your Applebee's, your Ilgi, your Guino's, your Route 9 restaurants, your CB at Lacy, AKA Old Charlie Brown's, Forked River Wine and Spirits, The Waterfront, and Cafri's Restaurant.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes. Item number 11, Resolution 2021-160, Renewing Plenary Distribution Licenses.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, renewing plenary retail distribution licenses in the Township of Lacy. That would be Lacy Liquors, Quarks and Capit儿Liquors, and Spirits Unlimited.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.[1649.06]
Item number twelve, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty, one sixty one, renewing club licenses.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, renewing plenary, uh, renewing club licenses for the Township of Lacey. That would be the Elks Lodge, the VFW, the Loyal Order, the Moose, and the Tuna Club.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number thirteen, uh, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty two, authorizing the execution of an interlocal services agreement with the Board of Education for W L T S Channel Twenty One.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an interlocal services agreement with the Lacey Township Board of Education. This is for the use of W L T S channel and Mr. Lidle, of course. And this is from November first of twenty twenty through October thirty first of twenty twenty five.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Well, yes, but I know Mr. Lidle wants us all to vote no sir, doesn't have to come out here anymore.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number fourteen, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty three, awarding a contract for the Northwest Barnigan Pines Phase One Road Paving Project.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Swift and Sons Incorporated for the twenty twenty one Northwest Barnigan Pines Phase One Road Improvement Project. There was three bids that received, the lowest responsible bidder, this is including the base bid and the proposal fee, um, six hundred and thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars, and, uh, the year is a three hundred and forty five thousand dollar DOT grant that goes with that.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number fifteen, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty four, awarding a contract for the purchase of two Ford Expeditions for the fire departments.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of two twenty twenty one Ford Expeditions to Winter Ford. This is for Lenoka Harbor and Forked River Fire Companies. The total amount of the award is seventy six thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number sixteen, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty five, awarding a contract for vehicle equipment for the Forked River Fire Department Command Vehicles.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Elite Vehicle Solutions for vehicle equipment for the new command vehicle for the Forked River Fire Company in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty two dollars and thirty eight cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number seventeen, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty six, awarding a contract for vehicle equipment for the Lenoka Harbor Fire Department Command Vehicle.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Elite Vehicle Solutions for the vehicle equipment for the new command vehicle for the Lenoka Harbor Fire Department in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number eighteen, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty seven, awarding a contract to remount an ambulance for the Lacey Emergency Medical Service.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to VCI Emergency Vehicle, Emergency Vehicle Specialist to provide one twenty twenty two ambulance need remount for the Lacey Township EMS. The total amount of this is one hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and sixty six dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. And I will say one thing, we've, uh, we've been very responsible with the expenditures out here to remount an ambulance about one hundred thousand dollars less than to purchase a new. Uh, so kudos to our departments, our department heads and emergency services, my colleagues up here. Item number nineteen, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty eight, awarding contract for remount of an ambulance to the Lenoka Harbor Emergency Medical Service.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to VCI Emergency Vehicle Specialist to provide one twenty twenty two ambulance remount for the Lenoka Harbor Emergency Medical Specialist. Township is supplying a hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards this purchase, um, and Lenoka Harbor EMS is supplying the remainder of sixty six thousand, seven oh six.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty, resolution twenty twenty one dash one sixty nine, awarding a contract for playground equipment for the Mizera Park Top Lot.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of playground equipment to Ben Schaefer Recreation Incorporated for the Mizera Park Top Lot in the amount of fifty one thousand, six hundred and ninety one dollars and sixteen cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty one, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy, awarding a contract for the purchase of five Ford Explorers for the police department.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding five twenty twenty one Ford Explorer police utility interceptor vehicles with options to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill in the amount of one hundred and fifty five thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty two, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy one, awarding contract for the purchase of vehicle equipment for the new police vehicles.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Elite Vehicle Solutions for vehicle equipment for the new police vehicles in the amount of fifty nine thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars and twenty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty three, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy two, awarding contract for the purchase of docking stations for the in-car computers.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of ten Gamer Johnson docking stations for the Dell computers to Elite Vehicle Solutions for the Lacey Township Police Department in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty four, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy three, awarding contract for radio purchases for new police vehicles.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in care of wireless communications and electronics for the purchase of radio equipment for the new police vehicles in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy six dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty five, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy four, awarding contract for purchase of Panasonic Toughbooks for new police vehicles.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to CZW Government LLC for vehicle equipment for the new police vehicles, and this is for the Ford Panasonic Toughbooks in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and twenty seven dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty six, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy five, awarding contract for purchase of software for the Case Cracker Onyx System.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of a software package for the Lacey Township Police Department to Mac, Camera, and Video Services in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars, and this is for the Detective Bureau.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty seven, resolution number twenty twenty one dash one seventy six, awarding contract for the purchase of radar equipment for the new police vehicles.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Stalker, Stalker Radar and Care of Applied Consens Incorporated for a DSR one antenna radar system, and this is in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty eight, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy seven, awarding contract for the purchase of Dell Latitude Rugged Laptops.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of ten Dell Latitude five forty twenty rugged computers to Dell Technologies for the Lacey Township Police Department. This is in, this is for ten of them, it's a total amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars and thirty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number twenty nine, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy eight, awarding contract for purchase of body worn cameras for the police department.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in care of wireless communications and electronics for body worn camera equipment in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number thirty, resolution twenty twenty one dash one seventy nine, awarding contract for the purchase of a fingerprinting system.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of a cross match fingerprint system for the Lacey Township Police Department to HIT Global in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty six cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number thirty one, resolution twenty twenty one dash one eighty, awarding contract for the purchase of a Ford F five fifty.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Winter Ford for a twenty twenty one born newer Ford F five fifty regular cab with steel body dump in the amount of ninety thousand, nine hundred and fifty five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number thirty two, resolution twenty twenty one dash one eighty one, awarding a contract for purchase of a John Deere Backhoe Loader.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Justo Incorporated for the purchase of a John Deere three ten SL H L Backhoe Loader with attachments. The total price is a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty four cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number thirty three, resolution twenty twenty one dash one eighty two, awarding contract for purchase of a John Deere Compact Excavator.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Justo Incorporated for the purchase of a John Deere thirty five G Compact Excavator with a twenty four inch heavy duty bucket with custom attachments in the amount of fifty six thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars and seventy one cents. Motion?
Move it.
And ninety-seven cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Item number thirty-six, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one-eight-five, awarding contract for the purchase of a sport field edger.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to turf equipment and supply company for the purchase of a sport field edger and sand pro five thousand and forty with attachments in the amount of thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and five cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Item number thirty-seven, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one-eight-six, awarding a contract for the purchase of a stand-on air raider.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding contract to turf equipment and supply company for the purchase of a thirty-inch stand-on air raider E-DEP in the amount of nine thousand, thirty dollars and ten cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Item number thirty-eight, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one-eight-seven, authorizing the release of a performance bond for block two-eight-seven, lot two-point-zero-six.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for Franklin Poo LLC. This is for block two-eight-seven, lot two-point-zero-six. It has been sold and a new bond has been placed by the new owner, and I'm releasing the bond to the previous owner.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Item number thirty-nine, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one-eight-eight, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for block fifteen-eight-two, lots one through three, seven, and lots thirty-eight through fifty.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for block fifteen-eight-two, lots one through three, thirty-eight through fifty, posted by Exit Seventy-four LLC. This is the shopping closet that's right there off of Trenton Avenue where the Pine Lands Vet is, and I believe there's an insurance company that's there as well.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Item number forty, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one-eight-nine, authorizing the refund of deposit lines.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Item number forty-one, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes. Monthly reports.
Municipal reports for the month of May collected receipts in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Yeah, we're not going to balance my revenues with my expenses tonight, guys, for sure, not tonight, no. Municipal report for the month of April brought in receipts in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. For the month of May, road opening permits came in in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, recycling commodity in the amount of nineteen hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents, truck parking in the amount of three thousand, one hundred dollars. And for the month of May, community development brought in receipts in the amount of a hundred and one thousand, thirty-six dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Motion approved township meeting minutes of May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved caucus meeting minutes of May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved caucus meeting minutes of May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee?
Can I do this with add-ons that I have? Yes, I have quite a few add-ons.
Quite a few.
Okay, so here's resolution, I didn't have enough on this agenda, right?
This is like January first.
You can't push this to the next meeting?
No, it's a month away. I want to get my business done. So first is resolution one-ninety-two. It's a resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-two Ford F-two-fifty standard cab XLT to Winter Ford. This just came out on the state contract of late on Wednesday, so that's why it wasn't out on the agenda, and it's in the amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol. Next is resolution one-ninety-three. It's a resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to a third-party power supplier to provide electric generation service to Lacy Community Energy Aggregation Program participants and to provide government energy aggregation services in connection with the Lacy Community Energy Aggregation Program. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes.
And the final one is related to a grant. It's a resolution attached to Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing application and acceptance of a USEDA Public Works and Economic Adjustments Assistance Program grant. This is a grant that will be in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. The township's match is forty thousand of that two hundred thousand. Once we put our economic development program plan in place and we get it accepted, we will be a vet, and this has everything to do with the fact that we have a nuclear power plant closing in our community. Once we do get all of this, there will be additional opportunities and additional funding and money that Lacy Township can receive related to energy and high energy users and getting incentivized to have other companies and businesses come into this community.
Move it. Second.
Yes. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtol.
Yes.
And I am done.
All right. That was quite a narrative.
It was like, it was like January first all over again.
January first. Deputy Mayor Juliano.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reach out and give a heartfelt again to the Darmany family. I was able to go to the service, and as always, it was seeing all the blue there to honor him. He was definitely a good man. Had a lot of good conversations with him. We talked a little bit about it that day with his son, because a lot of times he came up and we used to talk about cars. He was getting into via car bump, so I want to give my best to the Darmany family. Memorial Day service we had, what a great turnout to honor our veterans. I really want to thank everybody in Lacy Township. It was a great turnout to honor all of them, veterans, men and women, past and present. Graduation ceremonies next week. Mayor, I know you're going to be on vacation. I thank you for the honor. I will be attending both of the graduation ceremonies, so thank you for that. I want to give a little shout-out to, which I always do for everybody that works in this township, but especially, I had a little bit of a scare at my home, and I was up north at a meeting, but I could tell you this, the Lacy Township Fire Department and Police Department were at my house in no time as they would with everybody else, but I want to thank them. They made me feel safe because I was in traffic trying to get home after you get that phone call that you got smoke in your house and your air conditioner unit is starting to burn down, and the gas company too for going there. I want to thank them too. And I'm not just saying it because it was my home, but the great job that they all did, and they do for everybody in town. I want to thank them. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have. And I want to also thank, like I said, all the volunteers, firemen, all of our workers in Lacy Township, the whole Lacy Township employment and volunteers. I want to thank them very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very, very much. Committee man Dyckoff?
Oh, thank you, sorry. So, I'm going to be short, but I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback on Deputy Mayor Juliano, but I'm going to add a little bit. So, of course, you know, we thank all our township workers, and we thank all volunteers, which will make this township great. But what I want to point out is, no one really understands, most people don't understand what it takes to run a town. As far as public works, the police department, the MUA, parks and rec, but administration. And to put together an agenda like we had tonight with the amount of personnel that Administrator Larray has is nothing short of miraculous, because most municipalities our size or closer do the kind of business we do, they have an administrator, an assistant administrator, a clerk, a deputy clerk. This woman next to me is our administrator clerk. She doesn't have a deputy clerk. She has one person in her administration office. Our finance and, you know, we're short in there right now, but to put together something like this and have it come off seamlessly, now, I know that, you know, thanks to Mr. McDonald and Mr. Kenneth to make the most of the second, that's a big thing too, but really, thank you, Mr. Larray, for the hard work you did in putting this together. You know, we joke about this being like January first, where we do, you know, we do a reorg. It's not like January first. That's kind of a template. This is nothing like that. This is all of the equipment that this township needs to operate, the paperwork and work that goes into it, it would be my model. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Committee man McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to let everybody know the farmer's market is now up and running, so stop by there and get your goods there. My wife goes there more than I tell you Friday. The pines paving contract is long, long, long overdue, and that's just phase one. We've got a couple more phases to go through there. The hundred-and-fiftieth, as you can see, the ladies put a great deal of time and effort and thought into this, along with Jim Weyland, our recreation director. So I would hope that everybody gets to participate in this and pitch in if they do put a lot of time into this. Memorial Day ceremony, again, anytime we get to honor events, that's a plus. And one last thing, I was at a fundraiser last night, and I had the sheriff come up to me. I sit on the Library Commission for Ocean County, and he had a compliment for us, for our police department. It seems that we had an incident down at the Lacy Library where somebody walked in with a camera and was being obstinate, and it's my First Amendment rights and everything else like that, and our police department came down and handled it, and he singled me out and said, "I just want to let you know that they did as professional's job as possible," because they had to bring the sheriff down because it is the Library Commission. So kudos goes out to our police department and the way they handled that situation. So, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Committee man McDonald. Committee man Kenneth?
Thank you, Mayor. I also had a chance to attend the Memorial Day ceremony. I just want to thank the Veterans Commission for putting it together. It's a big difference from last year's ceremony. I don't think we even had one, really. What is that, bicentennial park running? Is that what you want? It is long overdue to be relocated. The acoustics there are, get worse every year. You can't, you could barely hear anything, you know. I know it's been sort of on the agenda to remove that location for some time, but we never get around to it. I'm also at a meeting this week with the mayor, with Oersted. The state of New Jersey has thrown so much money at subsidizing wind power that it actually looks like it's going to happen. So I guess we'll remain in touch with them as they try to connect to the Oyster Creek Power Plant. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, before you go, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I just want, you know, we read a lot of things out here for lawnmowers, Ford trucks, and things like that. We actually changed how we handled the budget a little bit this year. Instead of us telling the departments what they needed, we actually assigned the amount of money to them and said, "Go get it." And I know of a couple department heads that were on the phone with the salesmen, talking them down on prices and things like that, and they couldn't really believe it, and we'll have to evaluate this, but hopefully we can still go forward, because I think the department heads, for the most part, were appreciative of just saying, "Look, you guys know better than the township committee what you guys need in your departments." So we'll sign the amount of money, and you guys can go out and get what you want. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I know you had a lot to do with that. Thank you, Tim. I'd like to start with Chief Darmany. As I said up here, I've been on this committee for eight years. I didn't know the man, but the measure of man's reputation and just from what I've heard around town, he was a great man. I've heard many, many people speak very highly of him, and condolences to his family. Try to keep it upbeat tonight. I want to always give the restraint proper to the town folks. So, great news. I was at Lacy Township High School last night for awards and scholarships. COVID notwithstanding, Lacy Township businesses donated two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just young people, graduating seniors that deserve those scholarships. So they did that at a time of virtual lockdown for almost sixteen, seventeen months. They still stepped up. They still recognize those people. There's probably over a hundred seniors there. I want to thank the school board for calling me, calling families, for being a part of that, because the parents were wonderful, the weather was wonderful, and so thank you to the superintendent of the school boards, mostly young kids. I mean, they did wonderfully well. Thirty-two of those young people are graduating that high school this week with an associate's degree. If you look at some college tuitions, which is talking in the back, one of my colleagues, and you look at that, there's thirty-two of those kids who worked that hard. They're graduating two years to the good already, so amazing kudos to them. Dougie Derby was a success. Ocean County Health Department was there with about seven staff members giving out COVID vaccines. COVID vaccines have been a success. We have more than half of the U.S. population now has been vaccinated. We have a positivity rate that's less than one percent, and that's with a PCR test. So you have virtually controlled this with the work that everyone here, within earshot of my voice and eye shot of my face, has done with the masking, vaccinations. It's all the reason they did it. You deserve that credit, because we are coming out of this, and we're coming out strong. We're finally starting to open up, and this is good news for business all around. Three weeks ago, there were forty-two people hospitalized in Ocean County. That's out of a population of six-hundred and seven thousand, or virtually a statistical zero. So it's possible that more people got bit by sharks on Easter Seaboard from Maine to Key West than were hospitalized with COVID in Ocean County some three, four weeks ago. So I'm not here to minimize, but I am here to tell you that the good work everybody's doing is really paying some dividends. The estate cards, I was a little disappointed that these gentlemen weren't going to be able to be zoomed in tonight. We have about forty-four hundred of our residents on the estate card program. That means money comes right off of their tax bill. So the tax bill goes up to the municipal portion, seventeen to twenty-seven dollars, depending on which merchant they choose, and there are several in the town, and there's also thirty-two hundred of them online, where we've all lived during COVID. This is money that comes straight off of that bill. What I've asked estate cards to produce, when they finally make a presentation to our townspeople, is give us a total over the last three years. I researched this program. It's the best program in the state. It's better than some other rebate programs. I've asked them to provide a total, see what exactly our people are saving by being part of it. It's an important, important program, so I want to thank them for their continued vigilance. Also, thank you to our former mayor, former deputy mayor, current committee man Kenneth. We had what I believe is a very productive first meeting with Oersted. I know it was a preliminary meeting, so I did write the note way through down. So within the realm of ethical reason and on the advice of council, Oersted wants to be a part of the Lacy Township landscape, use some of the property at the plant, and then run a cable. I believe that there should be strong advocacy for the tax base in our town. We did that yesterday, and know uncertain terms. They know where we come from, and so these things are being hatched out at this point, and it's very, like I said, I mean, this is going to be a long-term project. But the benefit we have is our geography. You go two miles off the west coast, you're down two to three thousand feet. You go fifteen miles off our coast, and we were told that you only go down between a hundred and a hundred and thirty feet. So that is a huge get. These wind farms are proposed to be not seven miles, but fifteen miles out off the coast of Atlantic County. Our sum total proposed right now is a cable that will run through part of the nuclear plant and under part of the railroad right of way. And again, there will be no shortfall in advocacy for our town and our taxpayers. I'll close with this, and I'm going to reiterate this and drive this home each and every meeting from now to the election. To be clear, the question on the November ballot to have recreational marijuana is to be cultivated and sold here in our town. I have reason that this is not a good idea. I've put forth these reasons from self-medication to minors using, to overwhelming police responses being used, and possible damage in property values, both commercial and residential. My reasoning has been based in fact and supported unanimously by the chief of police superintendent and school board. Again, you can vote no if you don't want that product grown or cultivated or sold here in a recreational sense. You can vote no. You can still purchase it in other towns, same way people from Ware Town and Bayville can come to our beautiful home, V-Bolt and Walmart, and patronize our nonprofit businesses. This has no impact on medical marijuana. So if you hear that, it's a myth. That's all the comments I have. I'll open the floor to public comment. Yes, please. Name an address.
Regina Descends of Sunset Dry Sunrise Beach. Could I have a little more elaboration on the item one-nine-four about the grant that you said? It sounded familiar that I had heard about it, so that's why.
The USEDA?
EDA.
Okay, so let me just get some of my notes here. This is Nuclear Closure Community Economic Development Plan Grant. That's what it's for.
Right, that was mentioned to me, I think, by the guys from Seabreeze. Is that the same grant?
I have no idea. This company reached out to me several months ago. Yes, that there is a grant, and there was only at the time two or three communities that actually qualified for it in the whole country.
Yeah, that's restoring the rods, right?
No, it has nothing to do with restoring the rods. This is for a community that is going through the closure of a nuclear power plant in order to develop a marketing plan and an economic development plan to remarket ourselves and to get economic development in our community.
So this is a different one, so I got to find out about, more about the other one that I'm aware of. And now, speaking as a private citizen and spinning off on what Pete just said, I received this book in the mail this week because I am on the mailing list for Learn About Sam. Kevin Sevett is the author of his second book. It just came out. It's available on Barnes &amp; Noble and Amazon. Smoke Screen, What the Marijuana Industry Doesn't Want You to Know. I'm about halfway through the book because I've had several others to read this week and other things, and there are some unbelievable statistics in this book, and it's not funny, and it's all true, and he's got some real-life stories of things that happened to real people. This new marijuana is just too potent. It will mess with the brain, and no matter how much money you make from marijuana, for every dollar generated in tax revenue from legalized drugs, it's estimated that ten dollars in social benefits is lost to help cover the related expenses of increased car crashes, hospitalizations, workplace productivity, criminal justice costs, and more. And the book goes on and on to say that, you know, ballot initiatives around the country have sold marijuana on the promise that it will generate billions of dollars in state and local income to be reinvested in communities, and none of that has materialized in the state where it's been legalized. So I highly recommend this book if I finish it in time for the next meeting, which I probably will. I'd like to read more of it to you, but I think everyone should get a copy ASAP, Barnes &amp; Noble, Amazon, Smoke Screen. It's very good.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Yes, sir. Name an address.
I guess I can. Mary Bender, Stark Bay Avenue. Just wanted to comment on, from the caucus meeting, item number five. Because of COVID, I've spent a lot more time in town than I normally spend in town, and what has been very surprising to me, because I usually will get into town around seven o'clock at night, I work out near Trenton, the amount of traffic already that goes south from Lacy Road all the way down to where Caffrey's is and beyond, is really, really, at this point, to me, because I've, I guess, how many years, thirty-two, thirty-three years I've lived here, it's very, very, very heavy, and my feeling is any development without increasing the size of Route Nine down there, you're going to have that traffic backing up all the way, and it almost backs up all the way now to the Lacy Road, Route Nine intersection. So I agree with, you know, unless they can increase the size of Route Nine down there or do something about traffic, more development down there, we're going to lock up. Just my opinion. Also wanted to share, September twenty-five, mark your calendars, crossing our fingers, crossing our eyes, everything we can cross, relay for life is supposed to come off.
It's the same weekend as our Lacy Day, man.
Is it really?
Yep. And that's our hundred-and-fiftieth Lacy Day.
Yeah, that was a date that they grabbed, but we're hoping to have a real relay this year. Last year, we did a caravan through the county visiting the survivors, so anyway, just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, please.
I'd actually like to just direct a question.
Name an address, please.
I'm sorry. I'm Dan Staub. I live on Hollywood Boulevard. I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Kenneth. Mr. Kenneth, you, regarding the petition to county natural lands, I understand that you see growth in this town and development, but what I'd like to know is, you see it as a tax, that it would be a tax break or something for the county? I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, because I see it as, if there are sixty-eight new homes there, and each of those have two children, those children are going to go into our schools that already have an overcrowding issue and a struggling infrastructure. So then us as taxpayers are going to have a larger tax increase that way as well. So I'm trying to understand why.
So we can't address the school situation on the planning board level? The school's enrollment peaked in around two thousand and six or seven. We're down like twelve hundred students from that time period, so I don't know how the school does their budget, and, you know, their budget is their budget. It's my opinion that the, that the only, that any development that's going to occur in Lacy is going to occur on Route Nine and Lacy Road. And I understand the concerns, but I don't, you know, the Route Nine's a state road. We don't have any say about what goes in or out of Route Nine. The state is required to allow access if you own a piece of property on that, along Route Nine. I'm not, you know, again, it's, that's my vote on it. I mean, it passed three to two, but that's just my opinion. I just.
That's okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I just, I'm opposed, really, I'm opposed to, like I said, the town is eighty square miles. If, to your point, if my taxpayer money, which is the Ocean County Land Trust money, that's taxpayer money, it would be better served going to a property that should be preserved, like, say, the Pine Lands, like something that's more naturally desirable to be preserved, or if it was, maybe if we had property adjacent to a park, possibly, but that's property along Route Nine that I just, I don't see that as, I just don't think any of that property should be preserved.
I mean, on the other hand, I will tell you, as living in Hollywood Boulevard, where, I don't know if you're aware of where that is.
Yeah.
It's the line, El Jardino. No one in my neighborhood can make a left out of our neighborhood anymore.
So there's a couple things on that. So that traffic light, in my opinion, should have never been built there, the Wawa traffic light, that should have never been placed there. We've petitioned the state at least one time when, you know, I want to say it's like six years ago, for the state to change the timing of that light to alleviate that traffic, and they wanted us to pay for the, it's their light. They wanted us to pay for the study to do so. There are plans, we've met with a number of developers on the old, the former Charlie Brown site, so what we would like to do, or I would like to do, or however you want to put it, it's been proposed to, to close Parker's Point Boulevard and swing Parker's Point out to that light and make it a four-way intersection. We do have these, you know, we don't, I don't just wing ideas out there. They're well thought out.
I didn't say you did. I just, you know, that's why I came up.
I understand the concern. I do. I do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments this evening? See, now motion proposed to floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion closed.
No. Resolution attached to Lacy County, motion of state of New Jersey, authorizing convenient executive sessions, guest matters, personnel contractual matters, and anticipated pending litigation. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, or whoever it was.
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff? Mayor Kurtol.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
What?
All in favor?
Aye.